Everybody's here, then I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of April. Hello, Alashonda.
Hi, Michael.
Our first item of business on the call to order is that we need to approve a temporary suspension of our normal remote attendance rules pursuant to the governor's orders. Is there a motion to do that?
I move to temporarily suspend the Urbana Park District's remote attendance policy pursuant to State Executive Order 2020-07, suspending the remote attendance requirements of the Open Meetings Act through April 30th, 2020, and allow all board members to attend this meeting remotely.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call, and I guess we'll have to go on seniority order because I can't have any special connection. So Roger.
Aye.
Alashonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy? And I vote affirm to Lee as well. So the ayes have it, and we have suspended our normal rules and approved holding this meeting by 100% remote attendance. The next item of business is to approve the agenda for the evening, and I'm not aware of any suggested changes.
I'm going to accept the agenda presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? I'm not sure we, let's do a roll call again, because I think we all try to say aye at the same time. It's gonna confuse Zoom all the heck. So again, Roger?
Aye.
Alashonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And aye. So that is approved unanimously, and we have an agenda for the evening, which brings us to a public comment. We have advertised this meeting and made it accessible remotely, as well as for people to send in email comments if they wish to participate. At this point, as I understand it, no one has expressed such interest. Is that correct, Stu? Okay, so in that case, there is going to be no public comment this evening, and we will move on to the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee report, but as I understand, there was no meeting. Is Jean going to make a report or we?
No, I don't think there's any.
Yeah, nothing that, nothing to cover.
Nothing to report, although I will say that they're looking, the people seem to be interested in having a remote attendance Zoom kind of meeting coming up for this month. Everybody wanted to know what was going on, and I think particularly the outgoing third year people are interested in doing that. So they're working on getting that that set up, but that's it.
Okay, then that takes us on to our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda for this evening, our approval of the minutes from the March 3rd study session and the March 10th regular board meeting, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, action to receive post issuance tax compliance report, and somewhere on here, there's, there's nothing about accepting our departmental reports, but, and then action to approve Resolution 2020-02, designating committed ending fund balances, which is an annual action that we take. So under our rules, if there's anybody watching from the public, it is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from our consent agenda for separate action if they so desire. Is there any commissioner wishing to remove something from the consent agenda? Seeing no indication of that.
I move that we approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an unanimous manner.
Sorry, second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, and under our consent agenda rules, there is to me no discussion at this point, so we'll hold a roll call event, roll call vote on this, starting with Roger again.
Aye.
Alashonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
And Nancy?
Aye.
And aye. So that carries unanimously. We've approved those items, and they'll move us on to reports.
Some of us still have a landline.
So.
I guess that's me then.
Yes, financial reports is the first one.
I'm just gonna go ahead and pull the reports up on the screen. This might be too small for people to see, but for the recording and for those at home can follow along and, and see what we're looking at. The first report that I'll talk about is what we call the revenue and expenditure report. This is a budget report that shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the 11 months ending March 31st, 2020. You can see on this red line here that, oh, sorry, page one, this first page of this report is what we call some one, and it's basically just our operating budget. It doesn't include our capital improvements. Revenues for this period were $11,252,000, which is an increase of $179,000 since February. Property taxes are just shy of $7 million, and we received our final property tax distributions for levy year 2018 in February. So we've really just wrapped up that levy year. Normally, under the prior county administration, we would have received our final property tax disbursements in November of 2019, but things ran a bit behind this year. So we'll see if that changes for the coming tax year. Down here, towards the bottom of the report, you can see expenditures were $11,515,000, which was a change of $414,000 since February. And we have a surplus after 11 months, which means there's an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $37,000. We had a budget to have a net decrease in fund balance of $685,000, so we're quite a bit ahead of that, but there's also still some activity that needs to be posted in the budget that the board will be reviewing as part of the budget and appropriation ordinance revision and the supplemental appropriation ordinance that they're, they'll be looking at tonight. So there will still be some changes to this, but on an operating budget level, we're doing pretty well for this fiscal year, and that's mostly just because our, our estimates for expenditures are typically conservative, and we also tend to perform really well, just as, as a good staff and being very watchful of our budgets. So we're getting really close to the end of the year here, but this isn't quite exactly finished yet. I know, for one thing, there's $300,000 of transfers that I still have to perform, so that'll decrease this number by 300,000. Some two is only the capital improvements fund. Revenues for 11 months were $7,561,000, and expenditures were $973,000. Revenues exceed expenditures. This means that there was an increase in fund balance in the capital improvements fund of $6,589,000. And finally, some three is those first two pages added together, and the number that we tend to keep an eye on in this budget is the total fund balance of the district, which at the end of March was almost $14 million. Moving on to the, following that are the summary reports for our main working funds, the general fund, the recreation fund, the museum fund, and the indoor aquatic center. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the revenue and expenditure report if the commissioners have any before I move on to the treasures report. All right, so you're welcome to interrupt me at any time if you have any questions, but I'll move on to the treasures report. The treasures report is a report of the amount of cash that the Urbana Park District has on one day, March 31st, 2020. All 24 of our funds are represented, listed with where the cash is invested in which banks for a grand total for March of $15,879,754.51. The second page, the top of the page lists investments that the district has in interest-bearing accounts. So of the $15,880,000 total dollars on hand, $14,751,000 is out in the investments. And I've definitely seen interest rates dropping over the last month, really two months. When I was preparing the February report, they decreased, and then they decreased quite a bit further. Luckily, a lot of our rates are locked in, and we are pretty lucky that we reinvested some of our CDs when we did, because now those rates are a lot lower.
Yep.
So, but you know, again, we kind of have, we have a lot of laddered CDs, so they'll continuously mature, and at this time, with all the uncertainties, I'm actually leaving a lot of them liquid, kind of up here in either in Illinois funds or in one of the park pool, the park money market account or our Chase savings, but that one has a low interest rate, so I try to choose the higher ones just for liquidity purposes, in case we need those funds, depending on the timing of when our property tax payments are gonna come in and so forth. So we've had a couple CDs mature that I decided not to renew at this time, just while I wait and kind of see how the rest of the spring plays out. There were no changes to interfund loans for this period, which is this section of the report. And finally, there, there was $488,000 of disbursements paid in the month of March, and there was really nothing of note or particular importance. That was just pretty, a very typical month for us with two payrolls and just some typical vendor payments that go out on a regular basis. And with that, I present the treasures report to you for approval.
I move to accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Again, well, let's try a voice vote on this and just see if that works. So all in favor?
Aye.
I think I heard everybody but Nancy say aye, you know.
Aye.
Okay, so then that carries unanimously. Let's move on to capital budget report then.
So I'll just review briefly with you the areas in the capital budgets that had activity this period. In our alternate revenue source bonds, we made our final payment for cost of issuance to Spear. And actually, the ultimate cost of issuance was $1,000 less than projected, so we'll be able to have $1,000 additional proceeds for projects that didn't have to go to the issuance costs. So that's great news. And I've made that adjustment. You can see the original approved budget was $114,000, but the probable committed amount that's final now is 113. And then the, I allocated that extra $500 out to each of the projects. In the 2020 budget, we had $1,900 of revenue in tributes come in, and that was the only activity in that budget. Oh, I'm sorry. I called that the 2019 budget. I meant to say 2020, excuse me. In the 2019 budget, we also had revenue for tributes and donations. And then we had spending on tributes, and we had the final distribution out of this budget line for the health and wellness feasibility study that we committed out of this budget here come out of this line here for the, it's been on the spending side. Now is the only activity in that budget. In the 2018 budget, we had construction crew projects. We had a recreation small equipment budget used on a safe for the new nature store operation. That was it in that budget. And then in the 2017 budget, we, we wrapped up this construction crew budget. We finished spending it out, and we moved up to the 2018 budget. And then again, the small equipment budget was also spent out on that safe. So we're trying to wrap up this 2017 year as we spend it out and move on to newer budgets. And there was no activity in the 2016 budget. And with that, I believe Andy and Derek have updates for you on capital projects.
I'm unmuted now. I'm gonna start with the rehab project, Crystal Lake. Due to COVID, we rescheduled and relocated the bid opening now to be held at the Champagne office of our engineer ERA. And we provided a link in a conference phone line to allow bidders to attend remotely. I noted at our finance study group that we've actually seen some increases in interest from contractors during the shutdown. Some had noted that the projects out to bid that they were working on were postponed indefinitely. So it's possible that we're gonna see some greater interest in our project, and we're anticipating that. And we want to make sure we continue to push forward on getting possibly a better and competitive pricing for our large Crystal Lake project we've been planning for multiple years. The bid had final questions due from contractors last Friday, and our opening is actually scheduled for this Thursday, and we intend to have that recommendation to the board at the May meeting with ITEP landscaping and the path project that was completed last year. We're beginning to further monitor and document some of the conditions from, if you recall, we had the contractor come back in the, in September and October and complete their landscaping portion of the work because we were pushing so far into summer that it was not gonna be an optimal condition. So now that we're getting into April, it's time that, you know, we're still checking on things and documenting what's happening, and we'll be meeting with our engineer later this week to establish, establish a plan moving forward with the contractor to make sure that we stay on their radar and that they'll make sure that they have us in their schedule here for the spring to come back and address any issues that we may have. With Liel Parking Project, I think at the last board meeting, I'd noted that we had a call with the state archaeologist, and they had informed us that there's typically a setback associated with features that are found on properties that typically is around 100 feet, which would obviously swallow up our entire parking lot and then some. I'd reported at that last meeting that the state said that they would go back to their group and internally discuss our project and evaluate the scenario to see if they could provide any sort of variance to us. And since that time, they did send us an exhibit that would allow for a much shorter setback on our parking lot. So we'll lose a total of three total spaces. One of them is an ADA spot, but we'll still be able to maintain most of our parking addition as we continue with the project. The accessible connecting sidewalk was originally intended to be on that far eastern portion. We'll have to redesign that path, and because of that area has not been excavated previously, we'll have to contract that with that local archaeological firm to be on site while that contractor excavates, just so they can monitor and make sure if there's any other features that we have that it gets appropriately noted and reported, and we would have to work around that as well. So next steps, we're working on updating, finalizing that design. We'll send it back to the state archaeologist team and the city, and then contact the contractor to update the project scope. So fairly good news. Last thing I wanted to mention was that we had two vehicles delivered last week. One was the custodial minivan that was a couple of years past its scheduled replacement for Della, and what's referred to, I believe officially now as Urbana, the recreation transit vehicle arrived last Friday. That was awarded by the board in the fall and purchased with a donation from Carl Hospital. Our graphics designer is working with a company to do the vehicle wrap around the entire vehicle and get that work scheduled probably in the next month or so. And then recreation staff will be able to start outfitting the vehicle with their equipment and be able to take it on the road to events and parks whenever we're back up and running again.
One thing I might mention is that the Perkins Road Site got active again. Actually, today, the contractor was out doing side prep work for the seed bed. They're gonna focus on the area south of the lagoon tomorrow for seeding. There's still a lot of water in the lagoon itself, and so the prime contractor, Dig It, is gonna continue to watch that. He's open to pumping the water out if need be to try to get some additional topsoil in there, but at least a portion of the site will get seeded tomorrow.
Are there wood ducks out there, Derek?
I didn't see any wood ducks.
My friend in Minneapolis has three pair, and I can barely stand, and I'm so jealous, so I thought I could go out and look for one.
They're, they're, they're around. I've seen some pictures on Bird Notes and the like. Just haven't seen any personally.
Okay.
Tim, you, you may be covering this in your report, but you all may be curious about the park grant, if we have any news, and we don't have a whole lot of news. We were working closely with DNR until the shutdown, and in fact, had a meeting scheduled with them to review museum grant requirements shortly after the shutdown began, and they let us know that they're gonna be out of the office. We've emailed them a few times to see if we can get any updates on museum, OzLED, and, and park, and they're, they're just not evidently, you know, checking email at all right now. So we're hopeful. You know, you can look at it on the positive side, that, that program would create a lot of jobs. And certainly, they put a lot of work into getting ready for the applications, but obviously, we're nervous as well. On OzLED, we were ready for our grant agreement to compete with work at Blair. We were told that that was nearly ready, and I think they're gonna deliver it to us in late April, but that's also been on hold. On museum, we did receive confirmation that the museum grant got pushed back by 30 days, so we're working with Ratio. We're, we're looking at a grant application at the nature center at this point through our early communications with DNR and that grant program. We found that any remote site projects met abroad MIC would not qualify. They have a more strict interpretation of how those grant funds should be used, and so in talking with Judy, the highest priority was to put a pavilion up by the nature center for day camp. The existing day camp pavilion in the Northwoods is a challenge site where we don't have utilities. The restroom facilities there are basically portable toilets, so this would be a wonderful opportunity to apply for that grant. And that is 100% grant, although history tells us they usually award a little bit less than the full request.
Is that at all for the capital budget reports?
I don't think so.
Okay, we may move on to the executive director's report then.
Sure. Well, as you can all imagine, most everything we're doing and talking about is involving the COVID-19 situation. Despite all that, and we're continuing to power through that, we're still making progress on a few things. Few updates. I think sent out a note that we had canceled the first downtown get down, the May concert scheduled. We closed the dog park, both Champagne and Urbana, as of today, April 14th. Fortunate, but it looked like it was something that was really in the best interest of the public's health. Staff's really working on every opportunity they can to offer things online or create other opportunities for connections, learning. We're seeing a ton of people outside using the park, so we really encourage that. Continuing to message as much as possible, making sure that we have signage up and our websites are up to date. Again, happy that folks are able to get out. We would expect with the nice spring weather, you know, warming days, we'll see more and more folks out enjoying. We also found out that the Getty Roads Day Event, scheduled for, I think, for June 27th, has been canceled. Again, we want to remind the public, the, the group they basically work year round on the event, making sure that we have sponsors. It's a volunteer-driven. It's a really a people-intent event. You know, it's a lot of fun. It's kind of your, the epitome of a community event. People together, music, people hugging, shaking hands, people coming back together after not seeing each other for a while. So we'll look toward a next year, 2021, and hopefully we'll have that event then. Staffs continue to work on our goose management permit application. We want to make sure we're ready with all the process. Derek and staff have done a great job. And so we are looking at the May 5th study session as a chance to create some opportunities for public input as part of that process. So we'll look forward to that. Obviously, that'll go on to the board as scheduled for the regular May board meeting. Work on the KRT continues. We have a Zoom meeting this Friday. I think our next step is to reach out and make an offer to purchase the .18 mile section of the abandoned Norfolk Southern Corridor that will get us up on the west side to Smith Road, which would be an advantageous location. So we're anticipating getting that information together and getting it sent off as soon as possible. We did have a media training session scheduled. We'd been working with Mark and a few of other staff on, the idea was to kind of work with our board and leadership team on the things that might happen in the district. If the media called or anybody was put on the spot, how would we respond? Obviously, that's probably a little better done in person, so we're gonna postpone that. But we do have that still in the works. Would like to get back to that. We're working continually on, continuing on the Wondell Sculpture Garden Legacy Council Ring. Tomorrow, we'll meet out there and start locating the trees for that. So we're excited to see the Wondell family continue to support that project. We have four sculpture projects in the works for this spring. Obviously, we're trying to follow the essential work guidelines. I know for the artist, it's pretty essential that they stay employed and that they, you know, keep their work going. So if there's a way we can do it safely, and it fits in with the guidelines, we'd like to continue with those. And lastly, Derek mentioned already, but I had inquired with our state legislators and also to IPD on any news about any of the grants, the Park, OzLED Museum in particular. I doubt they've heard anything, or else they would probably let us know, but couldn't resist and wanted to reach out. There's probably a ton of other things going on in between the staff layers. Again, we're trying to work with UPDAC to get them up on board so we can resume our discussions with them, give them updates on what we're doing. But I can answer any questions if anybody has any. One last thing, too. We continue to work on our goals and budget. I should have started with that. We've got a really exciting new format for the goal section that's gonna parallel very nicely with our strategic plan goals and our, kind of the visual layout of that. So we're excited to be able to share that with everybody. As Kate continues to mention, we're gonna continue to plow ahead with the budget. There's a lot of unknowns, but we're basically putting it together. We'll probably look at some parameters on how we adjust things. Certainly, any input the board might have would be very open.
Tim, do you have any idea whether we've started collecting UPDAC names, whether Ellen has put anything out about that? I guess she hasn't, because I haven't gotten anything.
I think, I know we've started to put together names of different groups. We're kind of focusing on past chairs also. I think we need to schedule our next meeting and get our next steps with that group. That would be an easy thing we could do, I think, using Zoom as well.
Okay.
All those kind of things, we want to keep those moving. You know, they're gonna come up in the future. Right now, it's a good time to be working on those.
Right.
Things, so.
Good.
That's all I added. Other questions?
Well, hearing none, then I guess it's time to move on to the president's report. Again, covering upcoming meetings. We've got the May 5th study session, which is our joint meeting with the Parks Foundation Board. And as Tim mentioned, may also be hearing about the geese in, in Crystal Lake Park. And I don't know whether that'll be a, an in-person meeting or not. I guess remains to be found out on that. And then May 12th is our, not only our regular board meeting time, but it's also the annual board meeting. So we'll have the annual selection of, of board officers and, and making the various annual appointments that we have to do at that meeting as well. So that will, will be a busy meeting, I suspect, and I hope that it's in person, but if we have to do it by Zoom. that will be a busy meeting, I suspect, and I hope that it's in person, but if we have to do it by Zoom again, I guess we will work our way through that as well. Moving on to the liaison reports. We finance study group last met on on the 10th of April. Most of the things we discussed there have already been mentioned here tonight. I think essentially everything has. And our next meeting is currently scheduled for the first of May, as I recall. And for the policy study group, is there anything to report on that?
I can just say we met last March, discussed policy changes, which we approved at our last board meeting. And as a reminder to the public, those were revisions to our investment policy, prohibition on balloon releases in parks and policy updates regarding the use of security cameras.
And Roger, do you have a Parks Foundation representative report?
Yeah, the foundation met via Zoom yesterday, the 13th. Nothing particularly of of great interest. We did, everybody knows that the Barn Bash has been postponed for a year. We discussed that briefly. Jim Conlin, the new treasurer for the for the foundation is in the process of getting a new bookkeeping system going. And when he has that, he'll be able to generate reports, which we haven't had for a couple of months. And that's about it. Our next meeting is the joint meeting with the with with our board.
Thank you. And UPDAC planning study group, is there anything, is there an update there?
We met last August to finalize topics through the first half of 2020 and plans to meet again for the second half of 2020.
Alrighty. Moving on to old business and the only item there is if we had removed anything from the consent agenda and we did not. So we can move on then to new business. And the first item is action on ordinance 2020 dash zero five authorizing supplemental appropriations for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget.
I'll just speak to this for a minute because it's not something that we have typically done before, although I think in our history, we have done it before. But because we issued the bonds, the big bonds, alternate revenue source bonds after we approved our initial budget appropriation ordinance, we actually need to, some of those items are actually items that need to go into our books. The receipt of the bond proceeds then allows us to book the expense of paying off the old bonds and all of that actually still needs to be booked. I worked with our auditors on it to make sure that I fully understood all of the different things that need to be booked. And the cost of issuance, actually it gets split between the capital improvements fund and the bond fund on a prorated basis based on which funds received the proceeds. So the bonds that were refunded, those proceeds went into the bond fund to pay off those bonds and then the funds that were received for projects went into capital improvements fund and then the cost of issuance will get split between the two. And so after the board approves that supplemental appropriation ordinance, I'll book all of those entries. Also, I wanted to let you know that I also worked with Matt Deering on this as well to make sure that we were all in compliance. Our attorney and because a supplemental appropriation ordinance does not require newspaper posting or a hearing because the reason that you're allowed to have the supplemental appropriations is because you had offset offsetting supplemental revenues, which is exactly what we have. So we had incoming bond proceeds that is now allowing for this increase in expenditures. So I just wanted to fill in the board and any public that might watch this later about this process because it's not something that we do very often and happy to answer any questions about that, but mostly we just want to be in good standing for our audit and make sure that we're booking all of our financial entries properly.
Were there any questions on the this ordinance?
I move we adopt or authorize a supplemental appropriation for the FY 2019, 2020 budget.
Okay, was that LaShonda seconding?
That was me.
Oh, okay. So it came through a little fuzzy in my ear. Is there, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions before we vote on this? Hearing none, we should do a roll call vote again, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. Next item is action on ordinance 2020 dash zero six revising the combined budget appropriation ordinance.
This one I don't know that I need to speak to too much. This is an annual action that we always do and it basically just levels out all of our transfers between funds for the end of the fiscal year. There's really nothing unusual about it at all this year. It's very typical of what we normally would do. But I'm happy to answer any questions about it if you have any.
I move to adopt ordinance 2020 dash six revising the combined budget and appropriation ordinance.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, again, we should do a roll call vote on this, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That carries unanimously. Takes us to a presentation on the preliminary budget, is it?
Yeah, I don't typically go into a whole lot of detail on this, but I'll pull up the summary pages and just show you guys. But you know, I don't want to go into May 1st without at least providing the board with some assurance that we've done budgeting. You know, that we that we have as a district been budgeting. We actually start the budgeting process in November at the departmental level. It comes to my office usually in February where I kind of tie it all back together. At this point, we still haven't received our final extension in the mail, but it actually got mailed on Friday. So all of our mail is being held at the post office, but it didn't get picked up on Monday, but I'm asked if they could email it to me and they just haven't sent it yet. So I hope to be working with Dick to get our levy and extension finalized this week, hopefully Thursday or Friday, once I get that in the mail. And and we'll know. So in this budget that I'm looking that we're looking at right now, this is just the estimated tax figures. It's not, it's not actually the final figures yet. So this seven million four twenty-three in property taxes is what we estimated at the beginning of our tax levy cycle when we were doing the levy back in October and November with the board. So usually I like to have that final number in here, but unfortunately the last two years because of the delays in getting the information, I have had used the estimated numbers. This page right here is again what we call someone. It's the same sheet that we were looking at for the regular budget reports for the revenue and expenditure report, but now this has a budget budget column for the next year. But you can see that it has whatever our budget is in the current year, it has the current activity. At the point I ran this report, which was sometime last week, so it's probably a little bit different than what we were just looking at. And then and then it has our budget for next year. So it just gives you a comparison across the board of of where we're at. And you know, last year we were budgeting a decrease in fund balance of 685,000. This year we're looking at just a very slight decrease across the entire district of $17,000. But a lot of our funds we budget to fully spend out, even if we're not intending to, just so that we have the appropriations. For example, if our in our pool replacement and renewal fund, we always budget to spend the entire fund in case of any emergencies at the pool that we would be authorized to do so. But but we don't actually really intend on doing that. So I think in the end we will wind up with a positive fund balance if this were really truly what our budget was looking like for the year. But again, we've really entered into a very uncertain time as of the middle of March. And as looking through these budgets, especially in the recreation fund, there's going to be a lot of changes. And I can scroll down to that part, but this is just the overall operating budget summary. And again, I just, I want to reassure the board that the way that it's looking now and the work that people were doing since November, we had a really solid budget going forward. And I just want to reassure everybody that you know, staff worked really hard on these figures and they'll work hard again to change them and adjust them. But if the pool doesn't open, if camps don't run this summer, we're looking at a huge decrease in fees of to our main fee fee making operations. So we'll probably also have some savings on the expenditure side because we won't have the part-time staff load that we don't like carry for the summertime if those programs aren't happening. So you know, yep.
Do you have a sense of the balance between income and and salaries?
Yeah. We've looked at it. We're still looking at it. You know, we're just really starting to look at that. But for example, for the outdoor pool operation, there's full-time salaries and utilities built into that budget that we can't avoid year round, you know, that we're going to have to incur. And so there's not a total, you know, savings that's, there's property taxes that subsidizing that budget that are basically covering those year round expenses. So it may wind up being a net zero or, you know, a slight positive or a slight negative if we don't operate the pool. And something similar with camps, you know, camps is one of those programs that typically typically gives back. Not a whole lot, but it usually actually provides funds to the the fund that those camps are operating in. So I'll have more information about that for you in May and June. I just, I don't have specifics figures on that now.
Oh, yeah, I didn't. That was really just exactly what I wanted to know is what you just mentioned. So that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. For capital improvements, but and I'll get down into the, I do want to discuss real briefly the recreation fund because that's where most of this impact will hit and I'll maybe I'll touch on that a little bit more Nancy too.
Okay.
In the capital improvements fund, we're looking at a lot more typical year here where we just have our normal geo bonds coming in. But then on the appropriation side, we've appropriated to spend that entire $6 million bond in this year. I don't actually expect us to spend it, but at least in my planning for this preliminary budget, I've put that in and I'm going to work with Andy and Derek and see if cash flow wise, I'll adjust that down a little bit because I don't actually think that we're going to, in the next 12 months, spend all of those bond proceeds. But I wanted to make sure that at least in this preliminary version that I had something plugged in there that was reasonable. Some three, you know, you can see we get back down of one of the, one of the reasons that I budgeted back up on this capital budget for the a long, long history of the park district, we always keep a fund balance in the capital improvements fund around a million dollars. It just happens to be what's kind of left in the fund when we issue a new bond that year and with the remaining projects outstanding. And so that's one of the reasons I budgeted this is to try to get this fund back into that one million range in time. But I don't actually think that'll happen until we get through with this large surge of new projects and then we'll probably be back where we were. But that was my thought process and budgeting for this fund. Some three, you can see this will be back to kind of a normal, more normal fund balance amount for us if we wind up spending more of those bond proceeds out. But the general fund doesn't have a whole lot to tell us other than that we will be adding to our fund balance rather than spending. Last year we were projecting to be spending 371,000. This year we'll be adding almost 150,000 if if we do perform as budgeted. But the rec fund is really just what I wanted to draw attention to. And this is the fund that where most of the changes we'll see will happen. Because right now this budget of the 3.5 million that this budget has in revenue is almost a million of it is fees. And a lot of those fees are camps and pools. So we're going to be looking really closely at this budget and see if we don't have all of those fees, how we can offset that loss with any other reductions and expenditures. Corky or Tim might have mentioned it, but one approach that we've talked about and that we kind of liked that we're starting to work with staff on and hopefully we'll have more information next month is we've talked about if we redo some of our budget projections with some new assumptions. For example, an assumption that we won't have any programs running through July 1st. And then that will have 50% enrollment for the fall and that will have 75% enrollment of what we had originally expected for January through April. So that's one of the the things that we're wanting to go back to supervisors and say, hey, if we give you these new assumptions, what do your budgets look like? And then, you know, some of that information needs to really come from the people running these programs. You know, we have a bottom up a budget that's always built from the bottom up and we really like that because it gets all the staff involved in the budget making process, but it also makes it difficult because we can't necessarily look into the budget and say, cut here, cut here, cut here. It kind of has to come from them too. So we want to give them a chance to weigh in on it and give us their best shot at getting our budget balanced again. So beyond that, you know, all of the funds are in here. We're going to probably have a more in-depth budget discussion when it gets closer to June is usually where we talk about the highlights of the upcoming budget year. And I'm sure it'll probably change 10 times again before then. So hopefully, you know, typically the process is that we we advertise in the newspaper, the budget and appropriation ordinance hearing and there's a 30-day notice for that. So usually we give the draft version to the board in June and then we approve it at our July meeting. And I attended a IAPD webinar about budgeting in the time of coronavirus last week and their main suggestion was make sure you wait as long as possible to approve your budget. And I was like, we already do. But but there's definitely districts, there's definitely districts that approve their budget earlier. Like I saw Paxson was like approving theirs tonight or this week. And I was like, oh, okay. So you know, there's different districts do it different ways, but we were already kind of doing it that way. So there was other good tips in there and I and they talked it was helpful to know we're all in it together, all going through the same trouble and challenges at the moment. But you know, I think we're doing it right. I mean, we could have a special board meeting and postpone our budget out to the end of July if we needed to, but hopefully this next couple of months will give us enough time to to figure it out.
Well, that's unfortunately not in your control.
Yeah, and there's no vote on this item tonight. It's just to get information in the commissioner's hands and allow for discussion or any other questions that you might have that have come to mind about the upcoming budget year.
What do you see as the biggest challenge with all of this virus?
Me personally?
No, in terms of the budget, in terms of money, in terms of.
Fees, I mean, fees is the big hit. And the other concern that I have is that they're going to delay property tax payments due. So it's not that I necessarily think that we're not going to get our tax money, but it's, it might cause a cash flow problem for us because you know, right now we typically invest that floor, you know, of our fund balance that we're not going to use. And if we're not going to get our property taxes, we have to tap into that temporarily for cash flow until the money comes. And so that's kind of in the back of my head because you know, our 70% of our budget is funded each year with new property tax dollars that we get for that year. So it's an issue if those don't come, you know, they're usually front loaded towards the beginning of our year. So that and fees are our two biggest revenue sources and both of those are going to be disrupted in some way this coming year. So it's hard to predict in what ways, but hopefully, like I said, hopefully fees will be offset and with reductions and expenditures. But like I also said, you, we can't offset all of them because some of them are going towards year round operations like utilities or, you know, full-time staff salaries in those program areas that you know, unless we're making other drastic changes, we'll still have those expenses. So my two cents.
Yep, put him on it.
Any other questions or comments for on the budget? Well, hearing none, I guess then we can move on in our agenda to action on any new business removed the consent agenda, which there was exactly none. So I will work to comments from commissioners. Any commissioners wishing to make comment?
I just want to know how the park, how staff, including the admin team are holding up throughout this whole process. I mean, I know it's again, very stressful. I just want to know how you guys are holding up.
Thank you. I think each of us could probably say a few words. You know, obviously the disconnect and being far apart is very difficult. We're a very social group. We meet, kind of do things together as a team. So personally, just missing that and being able to follow through on a fairly rapid basis to make decisions. It's very much up in the air. So we don't really know, but everybody's in that situation too. So a lot So a lot of our conversations are circular. We'll start out with an issue or a worry or a concern and then kind of get to the point, but we don't know. So you have to set it aside. It's kind of frustrating. On the upside, I think everybody's hanging together. There's many different ways people are contributing. We're seeing a huge bunch of the outdoor world. I'd even call it a resurgence in interest in parks and the outdoors, hope at last. I think missing our customers, making sure that, you know, the people we see often in the parks or programs or classes, you know, just that social connection that, that we don't have right now is very difficult. But, you know, working together with our other agencies, with the schools, libraries, city, Champagne Park District, the Forest Reserve, we found a lot of ways to support each other. And each group's kind of doing some neat and interesting things, so we're very pleased about that. I'll let some of the other staff maybe mention their.
Yeah, I, I think from the recreation staff, they're all doing a great job of trying to be creative and do other things to keep the community involved. And probably the hardest thing for me personally is not having the answers. You know, I mean, typically we're, this admin team's the one that's coming up with the answers to lead our staff. And, you know, it's a challenge when you don't know what the future holds. But all in all, everybody's doing really well. We have, we keep in touch a lot. We're still doing core team meetings and rec staff meetings. We don't do as many rec staff meetings as we've been doing in the past. But core team's been relating all the, they're having a lot of individual department meetings still, making sure that we're moving forward with things that we can move forward with. So I'd, I'd say everybody's holding up pretty well besides, I'm ready to get back to work and leave the house for a little bit.
Operations staff is, is also doing well. My sense is that people feel like the park district can handle this very well. They feel supported. A lot of people are eager to back, get back to work, but they also understand that we're, we're trying to be careful about how we do that. We've distributed essential work across our workforce. And so no one person's doing a whole lot and other groups doing less. We're all working together to tackle those essential tasks. And it was, it was, it was good to stop by credit day and, and just bump into a few staff and see them in person while, you know, exercising social distance. So I think that physical contact is definitely missing. You know, it's a, it's, it's hard when you don't see people for so long.
Yeah. I don't know if this information is filtered out. Someone from our neighborhood, so outside the park district, was so happy with the blessing of, that the parks are bringing to them. They made a, I think, a $1,000 donation to the foundation. Yeah, so, I mean, not everybody's going to do that, but I think that there's a lot of people who have that level of appreciation, especially what the operation guys are doing to keep everything, you know, running and looking good and clean and, and ready to go.
But what's fun for me when, when Kathy and I take our morning walks at Meadowbrook, you know, it was cold this morning. And there were probably twice as many people as what we would usually see. And on one of those mornings when it was warm, there were three young women walking in their flip flops and bathrobes. It's like, well, they're newcomers and isn't that.
In their cars.
There are people we have not, we've never seen there before. And, and that, 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 that's wonderful. It's wonderful to have that resource.
Tim mentioned the increase in park use. If, if you go to the CU Public Health District website, they have different data that they share. And a new one they've been showing is the increase in park use. It's up 45% in Champagne County.
Wow.
Well, Google, Google has also some like mobility by as well, it only, it's for the whole state and it indicates up 24%.
Go ahead, Meredith.
No, just compared to baseline, so.
Do you see a lot more people in Crystal Lake Park?
Absolutely.
Yeah, do you?
Yeah, it's, I mean, even, even on the colder days, there. I mean, it used to be, you go for a walk on a, on a blustery cold day, you might see one or two other people. And, and now it's usually at least a dozen or more. So people are getting out there. And one of the things you see in Crystal Lake, they probably don't see elsewhere. There are a lot of people driving through the park, a lot more driving through the park than I have been accustomed to.
Interesting.
Yeah, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago. I think concerns, hey, should we close the park road to encourage more bikers, walkers? I think Corky mentioned, a lot of people like to drive through the park. That's their chance to get out and it's safe, great chance to see the spring trees. And so we thought, yeah, that's, that's a good, good opportunity for.
Well, that's absolutely the right call because I will tell you, a lot of the people driving through there, maybe not always the driver, but maybe a passenger, don't look like they could very easily get out and walk around in that. But they're still getting out and seeing the outdoors, getting out of the house and, and seeing a little bit of nature, even if it's through a windshield.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Yep, absolutely.
Really good that's holding everybody together.
And I just would like to make the comment too. I, I think staff is doing a terrific job of dealing with a, an extremely difficult circumstance here. And there are no certainties moving forward. Both the staff and we as a board are likely going to have to make some tough choices when the budget reality has become a little more clear. But until we really know what we're dealing with, you can't start making those choices. So we just got to remain flexible and be ready to roll with some of the punches.
It's true, the clock's going to ring again. The original repeater clock, Michael.
Well, yeah, it's French. Want you to know.
Definitely not South American, they're always late.
Okay, so any, anything else for people to bring up? Hearing none, we've exhausted our agenda, so I will declare adjourned.